Good afternoon, everyone. This is a Metropolitan Council Committee of the Whole. We're in our Committee of the Whole room. I think we need a bigger room, but it's a good opportunity for us to have conversation and also information presentations. We always start with a land acknowledgement, land and people acknowledgement, and we have been taking turns with that honor. And this afternoon, Councilman Wolt has volunteered. Been volunteer to us. Thank you.
The Metropolitan Council acknowledges that the land we currently call Minnesota and specifically the seven-county region is the ancestral homeland of the Dakota Oyate, who are present and active contributors to our thriving region. As part of the Metropolitan Council's commitment to address the unresolved legacy of genocide, dispossession, and settler colonialism, and the fact that government institutions, including the Metropolitan Council, benefited economically, politically, and institutionally after the forcible removal of the Dakota Oyate. The Metropolitan Council is dedicated to instilling land, water, and people commitments in regional policy. These commitments support the Dakota Oyate, the eleven federally recognized tribes of Minnesota, Ochum Nation, and the American Indian communities representing over 150 diverse tribal nations that call the seven-county region home.
Thank you. And the agenda today, as I mentioned, is some information items. We are going to have our quarterly safety and security action plan and a presentation on the North Star rail transition. And if I, unless I hear any disagreement, I will deem this agenda as approved. I'm really thrilled that we have many people in the audience, and our quarterly action plan involves more than just going through the stats. We actually have some, a number of people who've joined us, some dignitaries from Ramsey. So with that, Leslie, are you starting this off? Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot to approve the minutes. My fault. We had minutes from June 4th and June 18th, meeting, Committee of the Whole meeting. And if there's any corrections, additions, subtractions, otherwise I would entertain a motion and a second to approve both those minutes.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay. That, those minutes are approved. Welcome, Leslie.
Okay, thank you, Chair Zelli, council members. As the slides come up, as you mentioned, Chair, tonight Metro Transit is bringing for two substantial information items. First, we'll start with our quarterly safety and security action plan update, which will cover quarter two of 2025. And then later this evening, you'll hear about our work regarding the North Star transition. That really started as, following the announcement back in February between Minnada and that council to examine transitioning from commuter rail service to bus service in this quarter. To start this update, many of you are familiar with our, oh, this is my quick search. I'm going to need help clicking, I guess. But the next slide, if you're able to follow along, there we go, is what we plan to cover tonight in this quarter's update. We'll start off with a broad safety and security action plan update because we do have two council members, so this is their first time hearing this quarterly update. I'm going to spend a little bit more time talking about the history of this document and presentation. We'll spotlight a few of the action items. As a reminder, the safety and security action plan includes over 40 items that we are tracking. We won't go through all 40 tonight, but do want to highlight some progress on these fronts this evening. And then, of course, you'll hear from interim chief Dot Seth on our police department update. And as the chair pointed out, we do have some dignitaries joining us tonight as well, so very thankful for that. I wanted to start by putting the update you're going to hear regarding safety and security into the broader context of our effort to advance Metro Transit Forward. And we bring these safety and security action plan updates each quarter, but it's really part of a broader set of strategies to increase ridership and improve customer experience. And so just wanted to take a moment to point out that while we'll focus on those safety and security investments tonight, it is part of a broader set of efforts. Metro Transit Forward is our strategic framework, really guiding our work during this pivotal time. As you know, we are experiencing a lot of change and have been since the start of the pandemic. Travel behavior changed, we're growing system this year alone, opening three bus rapid transit lines, our council endorsed Network Now, our service improvement plan, which you'll hear more about tonight in the context of the North Star discussion. And so that work is all part of our overarching effort to really advance our shared purpose of connecting people, strengthening communities, and improving lives. As part of Metro Transit Forward, because those are such big lofty goals, connecting people, strengthening communities, improving lives, we also track our progress through metrics. And one key metric is ridership. We'll be talking more at the August 25th Transportation Committee meeting about our ridership trends. I did share some information with council members via email on that yesterday as well. Right now, we're actually seeing a decline in ridership for the first six months of this year. We're down about 7% to where we were last year. That's largely driven by a drop in light rail ridership of about 14.6%. And so we're examining what that means, what might be accounting for that. And we believe that a piece of that is the increased visible presence we have on our system, particularly on light rail, our trip agents, our police departments, supplemental security. And those are all action items we'll receive an update on this evening. So again, I think in future meetings, we're going to continue to talk about where Metro Transit is more generally, to again, make sure that the public safety piece is part of the broader set of work we're doing. But I also know where you have a lot to cover tonight, so I'll move on specifically to that safety and security action plan. Again, this is a refresher for many of you, but just because you have two council members, I wanted to take a moment to talk about what the safety and security action plan is and how it came about. Back in June of 2020, shortly after the murder of George Floyd, Chair Zelli called on the council to do a review of the Metro Transit Police Department. And that kicked off over a year of extensive engagement with riders, with employees, with community members, to really understand what safety on transit meant to people and where we could be doing more to improve that sense of safety and security when riding on our system or working on our system. So those transit safety conversations then led to a police work group comprised of council members chaired by Vice Chair Riva Chambliss, to really identify where the council's vision and direction is around safety and security. Part of that police work group's work was to direct Metro Transit staff to develop an action plan. So we first developed the safety and security action plan in early to mid 2022. And since June of 2022, we've been bringing quarterly updates to this body because we heard through that process that council members really wanted to stay apprised of what we were doing on this, wanted to hear directly from the police leadership about what they are seeing. So that's the history behind what we're bringing to you today. I mentioned this a moment ago, that safety and security action plan is comprised of 43 action items. It's broken into three areas of work, improving conditions on the system, training and supporting employees, and engaging customers and partners. As I mentioned, we're not going to attempt to give you an update on each of those 43 items tonight, but we are going to spotlight two tonight. Also, every time we bring this quarterly update, we update a full report that does include an update for each of those 43 items. That was posted online, it's available out on the table as well, and certainly encourage you to take a look at that information. This is just a quick snapshot of the status of each of those items. And the main takeaway here is across all three areas of work, every item is in some form of implementation. So it doesn't mean we're done with the work by any means, but we, this certainly isn't a plan that's just sat on the shelf either. Our staff have been working incredibly hard to advance these items over the past few years, and we're excited to share those updates with you tonight. Right, I'm going to, with the chair's permission, turn this over to our presenters in a moment. I just wanted to say kind of to that end on all of these items being in implementation, that's really possible because of the staff, many of whom are here tonight, many of whom aren't. But across Metro Transit, this is all hands-on deck work. Clearly, our police department plays a key role in Minnesota's operations, facilities. I could, I'm not going to get myself in trouble because I'm not going to be able to name all the different departments who contribute, but I just, it's really a testament to how cross-divisional this work is, that we have so many people in the room, and you're going to hear from many of them this evening. And finally, I also just wanted to acknowledge that this is the first time we brought a safety and security action plan update to you all since the sudden passing of Lieutenant Rodriguez back in June. And I just particularly wanted to say thank you to the council members for your support during that difficult time. I know many of you reached out with condolences, many attended the funeral, and just, that was very noticed and appreciated, and just also wanted to recognize that and all she did for us here tonight. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'm going to sit back down, but I know our next presenter, Dan Stoffer is in the crowd and will provide an update on de-escalation.
Thanks, Leslie. And I notice we are in the smaller room, and so we're getting a little bit packed in. When we have some extra chairs, feel free to offer some larger spots to sit down and even bring any of our chairs to your room in the back of the times.
We need that.
We do need that one.
Tony gets a chair. Council members get kind of needy. No, thank you. Welcome in.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chair Zelli and committee members, nice to see you guys today. I appreciate you having us over here. My name is Dan Stoffer. I'm the manager of bus instruction for Metro Transit. I'm here today to talk to you a little bit about our de-escalation course that we have created and are implementing at Metro Transit. A little background on de-escalation, and I'm sure you all are aware of this, but just a refresher, President Joe Biden, former President Joe Biden, back in 2021, and the Congress passed that bipartisan infrastructure law. It gave $1.2 trillion to invest in, in America. And we are to improve our water system, our energy system, our broadband system, and the funds also are for transportation. To qualify for some of that money, there are some stipulations that one has to, to do. And one of the things that was stipulated was we were armed to create a committee focused with frontline employees and executive managers to come together and look at safety and security issues of our transit system. So we created what we call the JLMSC, the Joint Labor Management Safety Committee. And it's a committee, again, made up of frontline employees from all over Metro Transit and executive managers. Once that committee was started, one of the other requirements was to get some of this funding, we had to create some sort of teaching, some sort of curriculum that could be given to frontline employees and their supervisors to help them deal with the crises that they experience every day out on the bus and train and public facility areas. So they reached over to the Instruction Center, and that's the department that I lead, and they said, hey, we would like to work with you to develop this curriculum. So I was able to pick a few instructors. Some of them are up there in the picture. And the two that I want to focus on primarily, I always tell them, I will give them a shout out, is Nicole Bond. She is the one on your right side. She is standing there, and her colleague that is not pictured because he just was promoted as Peter Blumberg. They're the authors of this curriculum. Peter and Nicole and Michael and Mark have done a wonderful job teaching frontline employees of, of this curriculum. How did we create this curriculum? We did focus groups, we did several focus groups of frontline employees where we met at the Instruction Center and just talked and said, hey, what are you experiencing out on the frontline, and how can we help you? We also surveyed Metro Transit employees. We had roughly about 1,000 surveys that were sent back to us that talked about their experiences and what they wanted to see in the curriculum. We had individual interviews where we sat down with frontline stakeholders and said, what are you experiencing out there on, on the platforms and the bus? And how can we make the curriculum fit your needs? And then we also obviously called a lot of our transit authority friends from around America and said, what are you guys doing out there? And if you have established anything, can you send it our way? We'd like to look through to see what, what you're doing. And we had about a dozen authorities sent us information. So at this point, we had all kinds of information laying in front of us, and we rolled up our sleeves, and we created our customized training program. It's a seven-hour de-escalation training program. It's comprised of lecture through PowerPoint, video, scenario-based training, and even a knowledge quiz at the end. But we do it in a fun way through a family, it's called friendly feud. And so we cover all kinds of topics in this curriculum. Stress, recognizing your triggers, which is a, it's a very good one. It's a self-recognizing and self-reflection. We do escalation, de-escalation, and then recovery. How are you going to recover once you experience a crisis out on the bus, train, or platform? We started this curriculum, and we started it in the fall of 2024 with brand-new bus operators. We thought that that was a safe space to kind of kick our curriculum off and to get feedback on improvements before we released it to the masses. And then early winter, or actually early 2025 in January, we decided it was time to release it to the masses. And we're proud to say at this time that we are, we are over 1,100 people, darn near to 1,200 employees that have been through this seven-hour curriculum. And with that, I know that many of you are active in transit. We see out on the bus and trains. If you're ever interested in taking the curriculum, it is, like I said, a seven-hour class. We'd love to have you at the Instruction Center. Just reach out to me, probably through Leslie or Brian, and we can get you assigned up for a de-escalation course so you can see what is actually being given to, to our employees. And that's all I have, so thank you for your time. And I guess we'll kick it off to the next person, Liz.
Thanks, Dan. Welcome, Liz.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Zelli and members of the committee. My name is Liz Maurice. I am, I was the project manager for the Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design Study, which was focusing on platform safety and was led through engineering of facilities. So crime prevention through environmental design. This came under the action item 119 to study potential infrastructure improvements at existing light rail platforms to improve safety. This is a design theory that emphasizes the use of structures, spaces, lighting, and people to prevent crime. In the context of a light rail platform, it has the opportunity to support and create a welcoming platform environment, foster a sense of community order, create a sense of ownership and Metro Transit ownership of the station, and minimize potential, the potential for out-of-site activities. As part of this study, we interviewed agencies across the country who have brought this work to the forefront. And we also interviewed departments across Metro Transit to sort of understand our best practices as well as what's happening across the country and in Canada. And we developed a list of 55 ideas for improvement, some of which I can talk about right now. So some of the station applications include, does the design at Lake Street and Franklin Station? So part of the Lake Street Midtown Station will create clear sightlines. I know many people here are very familiar with that project, but there's a before and after picture of what to expect there. And there's a lot of opportunity to really improve sort of eyes on the street at that station, as well as at the Franklin Avenue redesign. That RFP included qualifications for SEPTED training to make sure that the designers also were familiar with this process. On a smaller scale, there's been, an example of this is the Blue Line bench refurbishment. So across the Blue Line stations, the benches are being scrubbed and powder-coated and really refreshed to make it look like they're being well-maintained and well-cared for. Another small-scale improvement that's a little lower-cost item is the Cedar Riverside shelters. They're rethinking the shelters to be able to be more durable and easier to maintain as well as create a better customer experience. For the Blue Line extension redesign, we have been working with the Blue Line office to make sure that SEPTED principles have been instituted. And another example at the 46th Street Station includes lighting improvements that have happened along the trail, platform and bus area improvements that are expected this year, as well as some landscaping techniques to improve eyes on the street and clearer sightlines there. Another really great example and case study is the Snellington University Platform area. So this includes the local bus, as well as the BRT and the Light Rail Platform Station. Engineering facilities has, has just made a plan to invest $200,000 in improving the station area in the transit center there. So some of these include installing clear shelter glass, and there's a photo there of that, removing that frick glass so there's clearer sightlines, as well as replacing plexiglass and other little sort of details around the platform that sometimes you don't notice, but can subtly send a cue that a station's being cared for and maintained well. Things like improving the glass frames so that the glass stays in place and doesn't get broken as often. Some of those are smaller-scale items. Other things include removing shelters in, in the retirement of Route 21, so there weren't local bus shelters that weren't being used. Other plans include painting the entire platform to update the, the look there, as well as cleaning the pylons, which actually I heard happened this week, so that's very good news. And all of these items, including at Snellington University, are really in step with other system-wide presence efforts. So really aligning the work that we're doing to improve the design with the supplemental security, transit, increased transit, police presence. And at Snellington University, the, this is all in line with also the upcoming supplemental security that's happening there, as well as increased cleanings of facility staff and the station adoption. So that is all I have. If you don't have any questions, I can hand it over to Matt Prosser.
All right, thank you. Welcome, Matt.
Afternoon, Chair Zelli, committee member. My name is Matt Prosser. I'm the Assistant Director of Bus Transportation Administration, and I'm here to talk about the next contract for supplemental security and trip services. While the handouts go around, I'd just like to place those services within the context of our coordinated layers of presence. Contracted trip agents and full-time, Metro Transit trip agents, in addition to security officers, are just a few of the layers of presence that include police officers, our real-time information center, community service officers, and safety ambassadors in the St. Paul Downtown Improvement District. Of course, they're supplemented by other partnerships, dispatchers, field staff, and our tech for safety, which is available 24/7. To go into a little bit more detail, the security originated out of the safety and security action plan is action item 1.3. It was piloted at two stations in the fall of 2022. There are currently security officers at nine locations. So if you look at your handout, those nine locations are represented on the left side. The next contract will extend security to 16 locations. So if you look at the right side of the handout, those 16 locations are represented either by a yellow square or by a green hexagon. The areas that have a yellow square, we're calling static security. So that is where between two and four security officers will be at a single site for 20 to 24 hours. So that is Brooklyn Center Transit Center, Franklin Avenue Station, Snelling Avenue Station, Uptown Transit Station, I-35W and Lake Street Station, Lake Street Midtown Station, Central Station, and 46th Street Station. The green hexagons, we're calling a roving LRT service. So that would be where a pair of officers serve adjacent stations. So they visit each platform, riding the train between the stations. So that provides both an on-platform and on-vehicle presence. Those stations, they're kind of plotted over at each other on the right, but are Warehouse and Nicollet Mall Station, Terminal 1 and Terminal 2 Station, and then along University Avenue, all of the stations between Hamlin Avenue Station and Dale Street Station. The other service that will be provided under this contract, we're calling an end-of-service roving patrol. So those are represented by the pink circles. So that is where security officers will be visiting selected transit facilities, up to 12 of them, once per day, typically near the end-of-service date. And all of these locations were selected with a combination of ridership, police calls for service, facilities, work orders, customer feedback, and then just overall employee experience on the system. This contract will also be providing trip agent services. Those services originated in SSAP action item 1.2. Trip agents inspect fares, assist riders, uphold rules for riding, share resource information, and provide first aid. They're currently a blend of Metro Transit and contracted staff. So in July of 2025, we have 49 Metro Transit employees serving as trip agents and 28 contracted agents. The next contract will provide The next contract will provide contracted trip agents in addition to security officer support, the trip often needs. And I'll end with a procurement timeline. So proposals, the request for proposals was issued on the eighteenth. Those proposals were received on June eighteenth. We are planning a business item for the August eleventh Transportation Committee, which will then be presented at the August twenty-seventh Metropolitan Council. We are aiming for an executed contract in the fourth quarter of 2025, and the recent amendment to our current contract, 22P123, will ensure that there's no interruption in services. And I will pass it to Chief Dotson.
Thanks, Matt. Welcome, Chief.
Chair, councilmembers, good afternoon. I'm Joe Dotson. I'm interim chief of police, and I'm here tonight to present, at Saturday, to present our quarter-two update. And as I begin this presentation, I'm here to say that this is my twenty-fourth year in law enforcement. Next month will be my twenty-first year in Metro Transit. And it's my opinion that the Metro Transit Police have never been stronger and in a well-better position place than they are right now. And there's several reasons for that. As we think about what our goals are, and there's three main, these goals we'll get to in a second, but there's three main principles that I've been talking a lot about over the last year. Our commitment to the whole community approach to public safety, our policing as a service and empowering the workforce. Throughout this presentation, you're going to hear those three themes over and over again. And I firmly believe that those three themes, along with our empowering our workforce and our wonderful staff, is making this organization as strong as it's ever been. These nine goals up here are part of our Metro Transit Forward Initiative. What I really enjoy about these goals are is they're not just for one year. They're a two-year goal plan. So as you look through each one of those areas up there, whether it be employee development and all the training that we're doing with our commitment to make our staff the best-trained and the best-equipped in the region, we're certainly working to do that. Our recruitment and onboarding avenues there with our CSO pathways, and our support from Human Resources, I can't think HR enough. We have full-time HR staff now that's helping us as people get into the pool, the application pool, getting them through the process much quicker. Our ongoing culture work, you know, we certainly have work to do. We're certainly not perfect, but we have a ninety percent retention rate now of our staff, which is fantastic. Our crime reduction efforts, led by Captain Ahmed and his team, the Transit Response Unit, our joint enforcement details, all of those initiatives are helping that. Our focus on community-focused policing, our law enforcement partnerships, is super important. Along with hiring too, I'll talk about later, but we've partnered with Dr. Foster to work on essentially character-based hiring, which we are doing. Character-based hiring now is fantastic. Increasing our visible presence on the system is very important. You'll see that, you've heard that in many of the surveys that are out there now. They're saying police more. Our return of the beats back to the system has been very important. Providing exceptional service to internal partners and support to us. Our proactive community outreach, whether that be our homeless action team or our officers on the beat. And just our professional delivery of police services. Being true professionals and working on that stuff is very important. Us focusing on our joint powers agreements. Just today, our first official county agreement came back from Washington County, so thanks to Sheriff Star and his team on that. Also renewing our joint powers agreements with all of our local partners is very important. And we're working on accreditation to the State Chiefs Association, which is a very big deal for us.
Sure.
Yeah, thanks. I hope you don't mind. Thanks, Chief Dotson. Just a question on the JP, the joint powers agreements. And I had a broader question about partnerships, but all this focused on the JP agreements. So what do those cover? I don't, you know, the other, there's sort of geographic limitations, right? Where there is some overlap and then there's some separation. So within the joint powers agreements, what kind of things are we covering?
Chair, councilmember, great question. Really, the joint powers agreement really, for us all, addresses our statutory responsibility, right? So really, we are responsible for the Met Council transit assets, right? The joint powers agreement lets us do general law enforcement if the local agency would like us to do that, but also it's helping dispatch. It's just kind of like a sense of playing roles. It's a formal agreement, so we all know who's investigating what crimes, you know, how we're getting dispatched. They've been, I feel like, really important in just relationship building with our partners to have that formal agreement in place. We can still certainly work with our partners, we'll also have joint powers agreements, but from a symbolic standpoint, it's really important to have those agreements. And there's an official, if there's a question, we go back to the document and talk about that.
Sure, follow please. How many of these do we have? How many JPAs with other law enforcement agencies? And I don't need an exact, you know, mag.
Chair, councilmember, great question. We're refreshing all of them.
Okay.
And so with our friend, our Office of General Counsel itself has come up with a general template. So it is a lot of work to go out to each city to do that, but that's the goal of ours, to do that along with, that's why it's so important with the county initiatives to work on what that, those agreements look like for the county. But we should have one with every agency that we serve.
Sure. Thanks, Chief. Can I just say, I represent four, five of the stations that have the supplemental security now. It'll expand in my district. I live and work in these communities, and there's just a lot of conversation about collaboration between law enforcement agencies. And one of the things at the community level is we don't see it as much, you know, and we know. We'll sit with, kind of become any sheriff, Minneapolis Police and Transit Police, they're in the same room with us. So there's conversations about what that collaboration looks like. But the transparency piece, I think would go a long way to generating good PR.
Yeah, that's great. And Matt, do you have a comment?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'll add one thing to the chief's comments. So I think there's two layers to how you should think about the joint powers agreements the chief is referencing. There are new communities joining our system as the metro system expands, and the agreement would vary with signify more of that. And we're in conversation with the Green Line communities. And that's like trying to understand what does partnership look like from the ground up as you build more frequent, regular metro service into a community.
Sure.
And that template works very, this template that was developed has taken a long time and a lot of work to get to a plan of what that looks like. I think that is a separate and distinct conversation from what you just referenced that involves more Minneapolis-St. Paul, Hennepin, Ramsey, where we have a much larger presence. We've been, you're going to hear some more tonight on what does that partnership look like? And I think your point stands there as well. So I kind of wanted to segment two ways we should be thinking about it moving forward.
Thanks, thanks, Chief.
Oh, go ahead. That's all we're having.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I just, for my fellow councilmembers, this is something we've been hearing about at Transportation Committee and improving these things as they've been going through. Often they come through on consent to the local council. But it's been proactively and systematically going through over the last couple of years. And not only is it the agreements of who does what, but it's the opportunities for the different departments to rebuild relationships, and a lot of players have changed over the years. And I think it's been really, really fundamental in sort of, sort of, sort of the joint responses because they also get to chance to know each other as well.
Yeah, great. Mr. Dotson, yeah, go ahead, tell them.
On the point of collaboration, thank you so very much for the work that you've been doing in our communities for the positive relationships that have resulted, not only with institutional partners, but with neighbors as well. I am glad to see the roving LRT list, and for those who live along University Avenue, I'm certain that they will be as well to see that increased presence in those areas, multiple areas where there have been concerns, vagrants and drug use and things of that, so it's just complicating our presence as transit providers. And it's clear that it is not only a partnership with law enforcement, but it is a broader partnership that includes all of the levels that we have of presence, but also with nonprofit organizations and with our cities and counties outside of the law enforcement arena. I wanted to comment that in the university area, I'm certain that there will be a joy that the roving presence will be there, although there has been an outcry for more regular presence, and I'm sure will continue to be. You know, there, where you squeeze, you know, where you are, and where vagrants or other crime, potential crime will move is like a bubble. And so, you know, there's been that presence, and then the presence, or the presence of crime moves. And then when the law enforcement or other presence is there, that moves further and further. Now with the regular roving, hopefully that will help. I don't doubt, though, that you won't continue to hear the need for more regular presence at some of those stations, i.e. Dale, Snelling in particular, where there have been concerns. But really, I wanted to say thank you. You know, that this is great, that we'll be able to observe as we have in the past with additional presence, the decreasing presence of other unpleasant occurrences in the hair. So thank you, and we'll continue to be in touch. Oh, 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 one more. I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry. And it's beyond what happens at the station. It does involve what happens around the station and how our neighbors and institutional partners are participating to help us observe that what happens at the station can sometimes be, you know, not the cause, but actually the recipient of what can be happening in the neighborhood. And so we need also to continue to be good partners to help those observations and to help understand what solutions may be coming forward from other partners. You know what I mean. I know you know, because we've tried to, thank you.
Nice. Every quarter, we do give a staffing update as well. We have six officers start on Monday, that's fantastic. So our goal is to hire ten officers this summer, and we hired eight. So this number really should actually say one-hundred-and-fifteen now there of actual police officers that we have. Looking back, I was going through some stats. August twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one, one-hundred-and-seventeen ops. So we're two away from hitting that goal. And really thinking about twenty-nineteen, we're in the one-hundred-and-thirty-three mark. Like, we're going to hit those goals. I'm very confident of that. Again, like I mentioned earlier, we have the, what, eighty-seven percent retention rate? We're not seeing massive cases of staff leaving. My goal this year, our goal this year, was to hire twenty, thirty officers in twenty-twenty-five, and of course, thirty next year. I'm very confident we're going to hire twenty officers this year, so that's fantastic. We're working with Marketing, I'm going to be the Difference Campaign. I'll be sharing out some videos on that. Really starting in October, you're going to see more of that. When you think about telling the story, right? I'm very thankful to our communication specialist, Jeremy Zas, who's helping us and our marketing staff with telling our story. We don't do a very good job of telling our story, but all the fantastic work that the Transit Police are doing on a daily basis. So this Be the Difference Campaign, if you haven't seen that video, I'll share it out with everybody, but it is fantastic. It tells the story of why people come to the Transit Police and state when they truly do make a difference. Much like the councilmembers are talking about today, impacting lives, changing lives, that's what we do, right? I'm also working on next month, have a full-time officer dedicated to recruitment. It's important to us. As we get a couple more staff in the door, we're going to shift some resources to ensure that we have full-time attention to recruitment. HR is doing their part, right? And our backgrounders and our training unit is doing their part. We're hiring more people on a three-to-one basis. We're hiring people before other people are hiring them now. We're doing some on-the-job training. We're doing all kinds of creative methods to get people in the door. This full-time officer, the science recruitment is going to help tremendously because it's going to build that connection with people, and we're not going to let people leave. We're also going to look at starting an explorer post by the end of the year. That'll help with our community service officer program too, to start getting our word out there. I think we have a wonderful opportunity with all of our operators and our transit staff to start building what an explorer program looks like. That's super important, building the brand and building what the organization looks like. Speaking of our community service officer program, it really is our cadet program, right? It is our pathway to being a police officer. And Sergeant Mohammed is in the crowd with us today, and she's really done a tremendous job leading that. In the previous slide, we've never been above twenty CSOs since the exception of the program in two thousand and eight. We're above twenty CSOs. I know it's only by one, but I'm going to take it. And we have twenty-five more CSOs in the hopper. That really is a credit to the work that Sergeant Mohammed is doing. And I sent out an announcement this morning that effective August sixteenth, we'll have to start saying Lieutenant Mohammed, so.
Very, very good.
And Lieutenant Mohammed, one of her new roles will be working directly with the Office of the Chief, focusing on recruitment, mentorship, wellness, and peer support. All initiatives are very important to us. Thinking about this CSO program, we have one lieutenant right now, Lieutenant Frankel, that started with us as a CSO. And I'm proud to announce Sergeant Pearson's in the crowd with us today. Started with us as community service officer in two thousand and thirteen, and he will be Lieutenant Pearson on August sixteenth. And back to the importance of working with beats, working with our partners. Lieutenant Pearson will be assigned the true team, our K-9 unit, the beats, and will be starting up what we call an emergency response team that can really just help in critical needs. Critical things are going on, that team will be out in response. That's what I was hoping.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
And briefly, not for tonight, but it'd be really interesting too to just see what your current complement of officers are as far as their longevity in the department. And then for those that have left, I'd like to see how long they had been with the department, just to see, you know, and I don't know where we're at too with some retirements that might be coming up. And, you know, it's just interesting to see, you know, how our retention rates and how long are we retaining them? And, you know, we all know that there are waves of people that might be retiring, but that kind of data for me is just very interesting. So no rush or anything, and I can certainly go through HR to get that. But I just find that kind of stuff kind of illuminating too, that next layer down.
Chair, councilmember, yes, we'll work to get that information. Those are all great questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll talk about some stats here now. We talked about presence by the numbers. You know, I'm pleased to report today that quarter two of this year compared to quarter two of last year, our proactive numbers are up seventy-four percent. Like, that's a huge credit to the staff that we have right now that are committed to the mission of the organization. So when you see that bar chart there in the far right, that's one of those bar charts that where we want numbers to be way high. We want calls for service to be high and show us the officers are doing activity. And that again is a credit to the leadership of Captain Ahmed and the Patrol Division, ensuring that the officers understand the mission and how important. I just, every time I see that number, it's shocking to me, but seventy-four percent increase. We've also seen a sixty percent increase in crimes that are addressed with proactive policing, which really means that the officers are out there being proactive and they're addressing crimes, not just calls for service. Our rules for riding violations, right? That's our quality of life stuff that we see a lot of complaints on. What are we, alcohol, smoking, that, those numbers are up twenty percent to last quarter. And then really, trip onboards are up twenty-seven percent from last year. So thinking about all the different layers of presence that Matt was talking about earlier, the fact that we're out on the system, visible presence, official presence, it is making a difference, and there definitely is a larger increase in that.
And Mr. Chair, just briefly again.
Yes.
So back to data, this is great. And then do we know, does Minneapolis or St. Paul just as two examples, do they track their calls for service year-over-year? Especially if we can triangulate them maybe around the transit system to just know, you know, and again, it's not to compare to say who's doing better or worse, but just, you know, to see their trends. And then if our trends are really skyrocketing, we know that based on people who are, you know, living in both systems and showing up in both police systems, as far as just, you know, on the trains and around in the neighborhoods, it'd be just interesting to compare. I'm going to make an assumption that our calls are going out further because we're really putting an effort, but I know so are the other departments. I'm just curious to see if that data is even available.
Chair, councilmember, it is. It's a little difficult to get with the different systems out there, but we'll certainly work on that. Really like trying to work on overlay maps and see what that looks like. I will definitely say this in the slide upcoming, you know, our officers being out active, right? They're on beats, they're out there seeing stuff. Our calls for service numbers, we really impact that calls for service number a little bit more than some of the traditional departments because they're responding to nine-one-one calls. a little bit more than some of the traditional departments because they're responding to nine-one-one calls. Not that they're not being proactive, but our calls for service numbers, we really drive that, right? So, when we see a slide later on, we talk about top seven or part one crimes, we'll see that number's very low, right? But that number is what we're really tracking. We're, we're tracking everything with other agencies, and we're also tracking, you know, a three-year average to see what that looks like as well. And I got a information slide earlier about a program that we're calling T-STEM, right? Which really is transit stats that we're going around to transit and council staff to showcase all of these different stats. Because we have two full-time analysts and they're fantastic, and we have so much data. It's just a matter of miling into the information that people can digest and understand.
Good question. I'll go with you. Yeah, ask Mark Jenkins.
Thank you for this. I wanna tweak, um, Councilmember Johnson's question a bit. Do your numbers reflect, um, interactions with our partner agencies?
Uh, Chair, councilmember, these numbers are just transit police stuff, right? We can certainly work on, uh, compiling data. We do enjoy details, but these are just transit police.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Go ahead. Just because it would also show the safety in, in our activities, not just of us, but that, you know, the Maplewood Police Department is engaged at that stop and so forth. Give us a broader picture. So, thank you.
Chair, councilmember, we're gonna get that. I will say the local agencies really, as we professionalize our organization, we're just showing up more. They're really relying on us to handle the transit stuff, so. But we'll, that's a great question, I'll just follow you there. Uh, our top seven crimes, which really is the serious crimes in the system, right? The serious crimes in the system, when we look at, uh, this quarter compared to last quarter this time, there's a thirteen percent increase in that, right? So, that numbers remain relatively low, right? So, when we think about serious crime in the system, I have a slide later that I'll show that serious crime in the system remains relatively very low. And what that number is, we're seeing an uptick in what we call intimidation assaults, right? So, just the threat of assault, people can report that, right? And our officers do that. So, that is one number that's tracking that number there. But top and serious crime in the system remains relatively very low, and it's actually a thirteen percent decrease from this quarter, same time last year. And this is the slide I'm talking about. So, the red arrow there on the bottom is the serious crime or hundred thousand rides. You can see over the years that that line has been relatively low compared to the blue line, which really, the blue line has to do with our officer activity, right? Those are the quality of life crimes. So, when you see that blue line, I would like it to be more consistent to understand that, but my takeaway in this slide is the red slide, serious crimes, very low. Blue line is we control the blue line by how active we're gonna be. We're running a lot of details out there along the corridor. We're gonna impact the number of trespass tags, right? Impact the number of smoking citations. So, we're, so don't be alarmed by that number, the takeaway of that, the serious crimes. Our prosecution date summary, we come, I think, pretty much every quarter and talk about this. And, you know, one of our premier partners, county attorney attorney, Charles Rose, today and later, uh, later about our Safety and Strong Initiative. And I say this every quarter, I'm not just saying it because the county attorney's here, but when our staff put together cases, and they're good cases, they get charged out. They one-hundred percent get charged out, whether it's Ramsey County Attorney's Office, the Mississippi County Attorney's Office, St. Paul City Attorney, they get charged out. You see, there's over eight hundred convictions yet this year. What's pending in court, which is very normal, right? Is cases take time, go through the court process. That stuff is, that number's high, but it takes time for cases to go through the court. My takeaway in that slide is that there's over eight hundred convictions in that category. And you can see the dismissals by the, by the attorney review, they're very small.
And Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Just again, year over year, it'd be interesting, you know, just in a ten-year span or whatever, pre-COVID today or something. Um, and then, and this is, and this is throughout the system regardless of which county they're in, correct?
Uh, Chair, councilmember, that's correct.
And then, um, and this might be better for the county attorney, but also just the time that things are pending in court too, would be very interesting to know before it gets adjudicated.
Chair, councilmember, great follow-ups, and we'll work on getting those updates. You and for sure in the next quarterly update as well, so. So, stats are certainly important, and I understand that. It's, it's telling us, it, it showcases what's really going on in the system, right? And it also showcases the work that our council are doing. But really, the rest of the presentation is about our story, right? It's about what we're doing on the system, how we're impacting lives, how we're changing this, changing the organization and getting back.
Really elevated as a concern for our residents, and it was attached to, um, Metro Transit. And so, um, you know, I gotta say, I've been out there, you know, many Wednesdays, not every Wednesday I can be out there, but I can say that, um, you know, we are impacting people's lives every day. Um, and it's, it's hard to, uh, to document through data, right? Um, you have to actually really see it. Um, we, um, I remember, uh, one evening, I was, um, you know, with, uh, Lieutenant Rodriguez, um, and, you know, bless her heart, I was, I was out there, uh, walking across the street, um, across from the library, because there was a lot of challenges over at the library. And, um, I was, there was a gentleman there who pointed to a young woman who was in tears and said, you need to, you know, said you need to talk to her, pointing to me. And so, the young woman was, um, struggling. She was in a domestic violence situation, and she didn't know where to go. And she had two kids with her. Um, and this was really a powerful, um, and, um, it, it was difficult. But I brought her to, uh, the van, and, uh, we brought the team together and really started calling domestic violence organizations, um, to connect her, to make sure that she was safe that night. And so, uh, there are many examples of this, and I think that, um, as we move along through this process, we're gonna be able to demonstrate, um, our success. And so, um, you know, Ramsey County is proud to be a key partner aligning our investments and services with Metro Transit to ensure compassionate, equitable, and effective responses. Um, transit systems, as we all know, are, uh, critical community spaces, uh, particularly for residents experiencing homelessness, behavioral, um, health challenges, um, and addiction. And these challenges are often visible on transit, uh, not because transit causes them, um, but because it is one of the few public spaces left that is accessible. Uh, Ramsey County is bringing public health, housing, behavioral health, and justice services to the table to meet people where they are at, and we, we do, um, system gaps. So, um, as the chief said, it's not perfect right now. Uh, we are finding that, you know, when we bring professionals out to the field, it's almost a new phenomenon, right? Like, you know, we have come to this sort of space of, you know, people coming to us and, uh, really transforming the way we serve our residents and going out to where people are at. Um, and so, this is a, a multi-disciplinary outreach team. Um, uh, we are, um, embedding co-response, um, teams that include social workers. Uh, we just, um, got our social workers out into our community. Uh, we have, we have had public health out there, but this, that was a big win for us. Um, and, um, you know, they, they engage individuals in need. These teams operate alongside Metro Transit, uh, police and community partners to provide non-law enforcement, um, interventions. We knew moving, uh, into this that we can't solve, um, our issues that we are seeing through, um, a law enforcement response. Um, and we can't arrest ourselves out of this, right? And so, it, they're critical partners, and we need to make sure that those who are causing significant, um, uh, crime in our, on our Metro Transit in our communities, um, we need prosecution and we need that path forward, but we really need to strengthen that other path of, um, you know, uh, housing, um, behavioral health, um, and, and public health and navigation services. And so, we are leveraging what we have, uh, what we currently have, and just reimagining, um, how we do our work. Um, so, you know, we're working towards increased sense of safety for our riders and transit workers, uh, reduce, uh, the reliance on police for non-criminal and behavioral health-related incidents, decreased emergency service calls, um, from transit properties, uh, and increased access to, access to housing, healthcare, and recovery support for our most vulnerable individuals. Um, and we all want a stronger regional coordination, uh, between county, cities, and Metro Transit. So, thank you so much for, um, for leading us into this, Chief, and, uh, County Attorney. It's been, um, you know, a lot of lessons learned, as the chief said, uh, but we are moving forward and hope to have significant progress. Yeah.
Uh, thank you, Chair and Council Members for the opportunity, and, um, thank you, Chief Dot Seth, for the invitation to be here today. This is actually the first time I've actually been invited to a Metropolitan Law. Come back any time.
Never too late.
I have been in the role of leading a public law agency since two thousand and six. I was a city attorney in St. Paul for four years, and then, uh, since twenty eleven, I was, I've been the county attorney in Ramsey. And I've gotta tell you that this is like the, the deepest level of partnership that I, in my office, have ever had with the Metro Transit Police. To be honest with you, uh, the Metro Transit Police was an agency that I probably didn't think about very much, unless there were, you know, a singular problem about a case or something along those lines. Uh, but this chief, uh, and, and Chief Dot Seth has really embraced this notion, and you saw it in the, in the PowerPoint presentation that he gave. He is truly a believer in the collaboration. And Chair Zeller, you talked about the collaboration between, uh, various, uh, agencies and city, county, right? Uh, in my experience, I, I know that the only thing that will ever, ever make a difference is when everybody is pulling together in the same direction. Uh, we always make the mistake of, uh, believing that we're making a difference just by pulling and moving something big forward. Uh, but we can do it so much better if we do it together and we're aligned, and we're talking to one another and we're leading. I've spent more time in Metro Transit buildings over the past year than I ever have in my entire career as a elected official. And I think that's an awesome thing. And the work that's being done here under the leadership of Chief Dot Seth and the partners that have come through, I mean, I think Ramsey County deserves so much credit. And I'm not talking about the county attorneys, I'm talking about the, the county manager's office and the board saying that the things that are happening on light rail is, is, is not just Metro Transit's issue or problem, it's something that we have to fix for the people that we serve. The residents don't understand or know borders. They just know that they're suffering from problems. And so, we've gotta get to a place where, uh, people in our community are comfortable riding the light rail, who are not, and I'm getting less of those emails from time to time I get from constituents who tell me about something horrible that has happened to them on the light rail station and wondering about what's going on with that case. And oftentimes during the pandemic period, I, we'd look it up and, uh, there was no case, you know? And that's just a common thing, and so, we need to work on those things, right? So, to try to make sure that we establish the lines of what is acceptable behavior on, uh, the transit system, and then thinking about those strategies that actually work. And this is where your chief is really excelling, because he understands that we're not gonna just, uh, fix the problem by rounding people up, arresting them, and prosecuting them. Uh, the truth is, is that, um, the recidivism rate of bringing people in on low-level offenses, uh, is really bad. And it's actually, the, the success rate is only about fifty percent. And we know that if we can actually get in really robust alternatives, um, we can actually do a lot better than just processing them into the system, getting a conviction. And these offenses, unless it's murder or some violent act, it's not gonna result in prison or jail. It's gonna result in probation. And it's gonna be some level of, and the probation is gonna be more of a supervision model. And so, it's not gonna change the behavior. And the behavior that we need to change is we need to get people to understand there's certain things you can't do on the train, the bad behavior has to stop, and it has to be visible for people. And the only way that works is if we're all pulling the same direction and we're utilizing a multifaceted strategy. And the chief talked a little bit about, uh, the, the work of the homeless, uh, action team. I can't say enough about that proactive type of work. It's the vast majority of the individuals that are, that police are encountering or that are making people uncomfortable. They're suffering from, uh, massive mental health, drug addiction, homelessness, all of those issues. And so, if we can partner with all of the people, our community, uh, I really think we can make a difference. And I hope that in a year or two, um, we'll, we'll feel even better than we do today. I know that there's still a lot more work to do, um, and we just gotta get there. And we can't get there unless we're truly in partnership, collaborating. And I just feel really good about, uh, where all of you are at, uh, with your chief in your police department. I also feel like I know so many of the leadership staff in this department, like I've never known before. And I think they're doing an exceptional job, so I'm, I'm just really pleased to be a, a partner and to be able to help convene some of these meetings and bring those resources together. Uh, but if there's one pitch that I could make to all of you is to invest in that home, uh, homeless action team, because I really think that proactive effort can make a difference. And then, uh, I think we've learned a lot through, uh, just some other initiatives that we've worked on around just some of the success we've had around auto theft and, uh, other, and carjackings in the East Metro. I mean, we have the largest reduction in the nation, in the nation, for two years in a row, uh, around those metrics. And it's, it's a simple thing. All we did was we just have, we know who some of these people are who are doing these things. So, let's just go start talking to them and their families. And what we found is that many times their families, uh, are desperate for help. I think the same thing can be said for a lot of these individuals that are on the train. And so, if we can work on making those connections, and I think families are the best place to start for solutions and engaging those families and providing them supports and services, uh, we can make a, a real difference, like we have around, uh, the auto theft, uh, work that has been done in St. Paul and in Ramsey County. And so, I'm just happy to be here to keep working on solutions, uh, for the people that we all serve.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Thank you. This is probably one of my most favorite meetings in my entire time that I've served on this Met Council, so thank you. Um, and I just appreciate your philosophy and this teamwork. It's, um, it's really heartening, and it's, we're getting to, you know, we're meeting people where they're at, is the word. And, and also, I wanna say, I've viewed a lot of the people on the trains that are suffering and going through some of this that we are addressing, actually as victims of other criminals that are preying on them. And that's why the drug dealers and the gangs and the organized crime that is out there doing business every day, and our clients are quite frankly becoming the victims of that. That, again, too, is where the focus needs to be, because, um, you know, and I, I don't pretend to anything know about the criminal justice system, but, you know, there are just some really bad actors. And I know that the U.S. Attorney has been partnering with local agencies on some of that. So, that, um, is also super important, because we don't want them to become so emboldened and so embedded, and quite frankly, they are. Um, but I think with this kind of work, we just, again, keep peeling away at those layers and, and just making it known that, um, that behavior is not gonna be tolerated. That, that would be at least my hope and the philosophy.
Yeah, and Mr. Chair, if I could just respond to that too. There's a department that isn't here, and that's the, the City of St. Paul. So, the, the, um, Safety and Strong and University Avenue Initiative was officially launched, and I can't remember what month it was that we had the press conference, but we've been, uh, working with Metro Transit Police and the City of St. Paul Police Department for a much longer period of time, starting in, actually, August of two thousand and twenty-four. And so, we've been tracking these cases, and so, there, we've had a number of, um, what I would say, multi-police agency work that's exactly targeting, um, the, the things that you're talking about, the drug dealing. Uh, a lot of those cases are now in my office, are pending charges. And, and you, I think you had asked the question about how long do these cases take? Well, if it's a violent case or something that's like at a higher level, or maybe there's a presumptive prison sentence, those cases will always get priority. So, those tend to, will resolve quicker. Uh, but we can only have about three or four jury trials per week. And we have about five thousand cases that we receive, and about three thousand of them are gonna be charged. And so, we just don't have enough courtrooms and judges, so we have a plea bargaining system in America. And so, we try to get through that, but some, a lot of times, these cases are gonna languish in the system for more than a year. Uh, and oftentimes, the, the, the delay, right, is on the side of the person who's accused of the crime, because, um, as time goes on, those cases just get harder to prove. But we do our best trying to focus, because we have to also kind of prioritize our limited resources. So, it's the, the people who are preying upon, vulnerable people on the light rail. Uh, that's always a priority for our office.
And Mr. Chair, just one quick.
Uh, no, I, I gotta switch to Councilmember Barbara now. And we're gonna have limited time for the next thing.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of quick things. Uh, first of all, just overall for Chief Dot Seth and General Manager Peteris, this is, the Safety and Security Action Plan is something we've been working on for years. And we knew when we started, it wasn't a one-size-fits-all, fits-all. It wasn't, um, we do one thing, it'll fix everything. And we knew that we were gonna have to take a, a multi-prime approach to it. And so, looking at, you know, the things we heard about tonight, the environment, de-escalation, those crime stuff. But really, it's a center on this partnership that has been developed. And really kudos to, to, um, you know, Ramsey County and at, at the attorney's office, because, um, we've been saying for a long time, these aren't all things that we can alone fix. Like, we knew that, that's why the HAT team was originally created. And, you know, broadening that and employing in people with expertise in different areas in the local communities is gonna be such an asset to the people that we serve, um, whether they're running the transit system or not. I think just having that, like you said, it's, it's a accessible community space. And that really is one of the more rarities right now in society. And so, people will just tend to flock there. But there are also people who we wanna help. And so, it's really, really actually heartwarming to hear this and how this is actually working, because I think many of us have envisioned this for a long time. So, I just really wanna thank you all.
And Councilmember Lillik, one more, and then we're gonna have to leave now. We have a really important subject coming up.
I agree with you. So, thank you, and thanks for your partnership. Thanks for your words. It's, uh, really encouraging. And I do have a question, and this goes to you, Gloria. And, you know, you said, um, uh, we, it's hard to demonstrate the data, right? And you, uh, and then you also said, we'll be able to demonstrate our successes. And, you know, one of the things, so much of policing and how you direct resources related to data. And, you know, one of the things so much of policing and how you direct resources related to data, a lot of that has to do with your calls for service or crime raids, which are kind of related to that. And so it's harder to figure out where the qualitative data can be codified, stored and used to direct our efforts. And so I'm just wondering, the stories, you know, qualitative, the stories that you're talking about. So how are we working toward developing a system where we can capture the stories, the qualitative data, and then use it to direct resources?
Yeah, that, it, it's really sensitive, right? Because we are, oftentimes we're dealing with privacy data, right? Privacy information and, but we are talking as Ramsey County. We have a really good evaluator through our appropriate response initiative and really bringing them in and can start evaluating our work in a very qualitative way, right? So telling those stories, right, tracking them, right, without, you know, using that person, you know, you know, not sharing the personal identification. But so that is a focus of ours because we have to demonstrate success, right? We have to demonstrate how many people we connected to, you know, public health resources and treatment, right? And following somebody throughout that. How are we connecting them through housing stability, right? And making sure that they are, you know, there's a pathway forward and there are case managers working with them, right? And so I think once we get that infrastructure in place, we'll be able to follow people. Right now, it really is sort of, we don't work, those systems don't work in collaboration, right? And so we could have one person who touches so many different places. And so really identifying in our approach and that one resident, that one person that we have helped that, that night and tracking where they go. And so that's the idea and that's the, that's where we want to, we want to be. And, you know, we, we see something here, right? This is, we're testing this, but we see that this success happening in very, in very different other geographic areas potentially. And so very optimistic that we will be able to come back and share some qualitative data for you. Yep.
Thank you. Thank you everybody.
Well, thank you so much for joining us for the presentation. Chief, I don't have one more thing to say.
Very quick, Chair. Chair, council members, every quarter I come and at the beginning and the end, I just always say thank you. Chair, I appreciate everything you do for us in the police department, the council members as well, Regional Administrator O'Connor, General Manager Kanderis. But this might be the last time I'm presenting with you because I know that you're getting ready to, to enjoy retirement, right? Maybe sort of. I do want to present you with a plaque real quick, just with our appreciation.
Oh, nice.
Nice try. That's awesome. That's awesome.
I really do appreciate it, Chair. You've really been through, with us through the thick and thin over the last couple of years. And I just thank you so much for everything.
Wow. Wow. And all the department, this is an incredible honor. Wow. This is, this is a profit center. I really appreciate it. And there'll be plenty of time and not disappear quite yet. This is, and honestly, this is such an important subject. I know so much work has been done over the years and the work that you've done is accelerating. And, and John and Gloria, I hope you'll come back soon. Citizens ultimately kind of sitting around there and appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay. So our next subject, I don't think I'm going to get a plaque for the next one. Okay, a bad joke too soon. This is the North Star Rail. Also, just to kind of set up a conversation, this is not new issue for us of council, but it is maybe time for a more fuller reading on the North Star Transition. We'll have some decision-making in the next few weeks. But to get the facts and understand our progress, we have both Adam Harrington and Craig Lomath. Craig is kind of spearheading this team, inter-agency team really with MINDA. And Adam, of course, is more than our sketchy, he's our service development guru. I do think that there'll be opportunities for public comment at the August 11th Transportation Committee Meeting. This is an opportunity for us to be briefed, to answer questions as council members. This is not a, this is a public meeting, but it's a public meeting for information, not for testimony or, or debate. Having said that, this has been evolving for some time. And knowing that we get some of the questions we have answered, that they're not going to be all the questions. There'll be, probably more as we, as we get further into this transition period. But knowing that this is sad in the sense that North Star was a brilliant idea, aspirational. A number of years that I recall being engaged. And it is a shame that we feel like at this point we'll have to have a transition. So we're not, there's not a moment of celebration, it's a moment of reflection. And also our duties as fiduciary policymakers to be prudent and to be thoughtful about the public, public resources and what can we do that might actually serve Minnesota's better. And that's a tall order to say better, but I'm encouraged to them hearing this and we'll have an opportunity for a conversation. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for those opening remarks. So I'm here before you today in my role as the North Star Transition Director. I'm Craig Lamoth. My pronouns are he, his, him. And I'll be tag teaming this presentation with Adam Harrington. I'll cover the first few slides. And then most of the slides will be covered by Adam, talking about the enhanced bus service that would be transitioned to. And then I'll close this out with a couple of slides at the end about next steps. As the chair mentioned, this transition process is just in the beginning stages. We envision that this will go on for some time, likely into next year and possibly beyond on some of the elements. But today we wanted to give you a briefing on answering these five questions coming out of this presentation. Why are we transitioning from commuter rail to bus service? What exactly is the enhanced replacement bus service? You'll hear from Adam about that. And when will the transition occur? What other activities are involved in the transition and what future actions will be requested of the council? So I want to start off and talk a little bit about how we're talking about here with transitioning North Star to, from commuter rail to bus service is consistent with the Network Now framework. A lot of effort was put into Network Now framework by the agency over the last couple of years. Really for North Star corridor, what that comes down to is providing more options for riders through enhanced bus service that offers far more trips for more parts of the day with comparable travel times and weekend service and lower cost, all of which you'll hear more about in subsequent slides. But it's also being able to adapt the North Star corridor to meet the changing needs coming out of the pandemic, what we're hearing from our customers. And so service changes that are designed to grow ridership, recognizing that how people travel, when and where, has changed post-pandemic. And what we're hearing from customers is things that we cannot provide through the train service due to the constraints of the contract we have with BNSF. So what we're hearing is for desire for more frequent service throughout more parts of the day, on nights and on weekends, looking for service that is fast, frequent and serves many trip purposes, not just the commute into downtown. And this, while at a much different scale, is similar to the discontinuation of the 50 routes that took place in March, nearly all of which provided just weekday commuter service inbound to one of the two downtowns, just like North Star does today. The other piece of this is, this is responsive to what we've been hearing from the community. We've done outreach both during Network Now as well as earlier this year, specific to the North Star corridor, soliciting feedback from our riders and other community partners about what the service design should look like for this corridor. The really three things it really boils down to as it relates to why we're raking this transition. Low ridership that has shown very little rebounding compared to what our experience has been on some of our other services. The North Star corridor and the commuter rail line has had low ridership from the get-go. At its peak, pre-pandemic, it was serving less than half of what its expected ridership projections were for 2025. So we reached a maximum of under 2,700 average daily weekday rides. In 2024, as you can see in this graph, we got it declining down to 430 average weekday rides. That's 250, 215 people utilizing the train on a weekday basis. The other side of that coin from ridership is really about the cost piece. So we've had steadily increasing costs on operating North Star commuter rail. The cost to provide the 40 weekday trips or weekly trips that we're providing here in 2025 is more than it cost us to provide the 72 weekly trips in 2019. The 72 trips, you'll see later slides, are the maximum allowable trips that we can provide under our contract with BNSF. We could never provide no more than that. And we have more costs coming on the horizon. Due to a federal law, every five years, the cap for passenger rail service for all passenger rail providers throughout the country gets adjusted every five years. That happens to be this coming spring. We're anticipating that cap to rise from $323 million of coverage to $400 million of coverage. That equates to about $400,000 to $450,000 of increased insurance premium that we will incur if the commuter rail continues to operate beyond spring.
And Ryan, you have a quick note on insurance?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Craig. I just want to add one other part that's cost avoided. It's not specific to North Star, but it's important broader contextually, which is as we pursue insurance for the Green Line extension and go to the same insurance providers, the limited pool who work in this market around the globe, our insurance on North Star has impacts for the type of insurance we can provide at the rates that we need there as well. And so there's a significant other avoided cost issue related to Green Line extension, insurance becoming significantly more expensive if carried alongside the existing North Star insurance.
Appreciate that. Thank you for that additional piece of information. When you take cost and ridership, what you get is subsidy per ride. And subsidy per ride for North Star today is really so different than all of our other services. It's an outlier both here in the region as well as nationally. In 2023, our subsidy per ride was $116 or more than $116 per trip. That's compared to $16 per trip for our typical commuter bus service. So what that equates to is a round trip on North Star was about, we were subsidizing $233 per person for their round trip per day in 2023. And then there's about 29 other commuter rail lines throughout the country. And only one other one has a subsidy per ride higher than North Star. All the rest are significantly less. With that, I'll turn it over to Adam and talk about the enhanced bus service.
Thanks, Craig. So there's a few topics we'll cover here. How we started the North Star commuter rail service, where we're at, which Craig covered a little bit about. A little more context on Network Now, building on those points, the community engagement feedback that we had and the efforts that were made there. And then ultimately what the recommended bus service plan is for transitioning North Star to bus. So this chart shows the change over time and the earlier slides capture this as well. But pre-COVID, before 2020, then 12 daily trips on the weekdays and we had weekend services, 12 special events. Then when stay-at-home orders were passed of us and really transitioned to limit the commute options so people could work remotely, that was scaled down. And then in 2023, we did add four more daily trips back to the mix to try and serve that market a little bit better. But as Craig noted, the cost for doing that was really what limited some of the opportunity there. And the challenge, one of the challenges we've had with the contract is we've long wanted to have midday service on North Star commuter rail. We've never been able to get that to advance. So back to Network Now, as Craig mentioned, we've been working on Network Now as a framework for building our service out to 2027. We've been working on this for a couple of years. We've had a lot of engagements. Our goals were to really adapt our service to the travel market changes that have happened since 2020. Look at how we can integrate our metro lines that were planned, make better service improvements with the new funding sources that we have, and really try and build a better system across the region. And so part of that was a very robust community engagement process that we held to really get a lot of feedback across, across the region, including the different modes that we have from commuter express to North Star to light rail, BRT and local service and our new micro-transit as well. So in 2024 was our primary effort on presenting the recommended plan at that point to our riding public in the communities we serve to get some feedback from them on what they thought about all of our efforts and the new plans that we've put together to grow our network over the course of the next few years. You can see here, we held a lot of meetings. We spent a lot of time in person with people. Our staff were out throughout the system and working with the cities that were engaged with us throughout this process. One of the key partners was Anoka County. We spent quite a bit of time connecting with Anoka County staff. We went out to their transportation commission to share an overview of what that plan is going to be. We had listening sessions at North Town and we had about 151 of those comments were about Anoka County-related service. Many of them were about commuter-type service. And what we heard from our customers is they wanted more frequent service to the downtowns and they want all-day service. And that's not any different from any other part of the region where you have now new flexibility for an office job and you might want to have different appointments throughout the day and also the ability to come and go a little more freely than you would have with just rush hour-oriented service. So consistent with that, we heard similar comments about North Star as well as the idea of extending it to St. Cloud and a number of local connections in the Anoka County area that are also operating in the North Star corridor, like Route 805. So this map just represents all the routes in this corridor that we've examined and recommended making improvements to. At this point, you'll see the council endorsed this framework in March 2025, which by this time we had not contemplated change to North Star. That was just starting to happen. And so we have this plan that builds a framework to grow upon and a number of local connections throughout this corridor that we can advance. So in March, we start developing our transition plan and really start to bring forward a product that we can present to the public between April and May. One of the key elements to this work is that the council has authority to operate regular up bus service within the seven county metro area. And actually, MINDA had delegated authority to the council in agreement to provide North Star commuter rail specifically. That doesn't apply to bus service. So MINDA has the authority outside of the seven county metro area, Metro Transit and the council do not. And so the service that you'll see here is really oriented around what we can provide under the authority that we have. And so that concept included two routes, Route 827 and 888, serving Ramsey, Anoka, Conrappids, Fridley and downtown Minneapolis with a half-hour service in the rush hour, more than what we're providing and did provide on North Star commuter rail, as well as hourly all-day. So we had that community engagement. We shared those plans. We got a lot of feedback from our customers, nearly 1,500 comments and surveys we got back. We had a number of community meetings that Craig and I both attended. So we got a thorough hearing, I think, of what the opinions were about commuter rail, both good and bad, what people shared about their passion around having this service. So it's, it's a difficult topic and it's one of those that we may not relish, but we did hear many comments. And some of the key points on this slide are, our current riders and our previous riders are really oriented around rush hour service into the downtowns. But we also heard from a number of people who are not current riders who would like midday service into the downtown. So we've got a bit of a mix. We also heard more information about what time people will want to come and go and service that they're connecting to at Target Field Station and other destinations. So we used all that information to make some small adjustments to the plans we proposed and they are here. So the primary route that would be replacing North Star from Ramsey, Anoka and Conrappids stations into downtown Minneapolis directly is the new Route 888, which would be operated by coach buses and would provide service every half hour, some arrivals in downtown Minneapolis even before 6:00 a.m. through a wider rush hour and then hourly service both directions, serving all of these stations between downtown and Ramsey out into the afternoon and then reflecting that in the afternoon service as well, every half hour, even to a trip that would depart slightly after 6:00 p.m. even to a trip that would depart slightly after six PM to meet that commuter market. One of the things that we added was weekend service, not too different from what was provided on North Star in two thousand and nineteen, but we're looking at shifting those times a little bit later so that someone could actually go out to an event in downtown Minneapolis or meet other destinations. Again, we had limitations in operating with BNSF that didn't really allow us to provide that kind of schedule window. So those are some of the improvements that we're making with the route that would serve these three stations. And you can see, one of the comments we heard over and over is, it's not the same ride as the train, it's not as nice as the train, but we're able to provide the service with coach buses, we think provides a very nice ride. And most of the alignment between downtown Minneapolis and Ramsey has bus-only shoulder lanes, which we've partnered with MINDOT on over the past several years. So once construction gets done on Highway ten, it'll be really great to be able to use those. The other station that we serve with this plan is the Fridley Station. We wanted to make sure our travel times were competitive for those customers from Ramsey, Anoka and Coon Rapids. So we have an existing Route eight fifty-two that operates from Anoka down East River Road and currently gets on ninety-four by six ninety-four to downtown, right adjacent to the Fridley Station. This route is very similar, except that we will route it directly down East River Road, which is consistent with our Network Now plan and really provides connection to job opportunities in a quite industrial park just south of six ninety-four, as well as a lot of new developments in northeast Minneapolis. So this, this route will operate every half hour from North Town to downtown Minneapolis, providing an enhanced frequency for the Fridley customers that they don't have today along East River Road, and then the same in the reverse direction in the afternoon. This route does operate hourly on Saturday today as Route fifty-two, and we would continue to do that. Also, for Fridley customers who might be coming from the east side of that station, so there's two, two platforms, there's two parking rides on either side of the tracks, and a lot of new residential development on the east side, those customers can currently access Route ten, which is very frequent service all day, seven days a week to downtown, and it's the future F-line, BRT, which will be coming soon as well. Little snapshot of the travel time comparison. We did some estimation on the travel time to the, what we're calling the core of downtown Minneapolis at Fifth and Nicollet, where most customers who ride North Star will come down, get off at Target Field, walk down the platform, up the escalator to the Target Field LRT platform, make a transfer and then into downtown Minneapolis. The, the travel times here represent a five-minute connection from the train to train at Target Field Station, which is probably a little bit optimistic, but some customers have their plan down to the nickel. So I would say I'd give a swag of five to ten minutes on that travel time into the core of downtown, which compared to the bus plan, bus to Fifth and Nicollet, where it shows sixty-three minutes to downtown. That's longer because that bus has to go from Ramsey Station to Anoka Station and into the Coon Rapids Station. That just takes a little bit more time. But I think in the end, it's going to be very competitive going to the core of downtown directly rather than asking for transfer. And of course, if people are going to other destinations from downtown Minneapolis at Fifth and Nicollet, you can get to any light rail station from that point on and nearly anywhere in the region from that location. So we think it's a fairly competitive option compared to what North Star offers today. Some nerdy stats about rail to bus. Today on North Star, we offer forty weekly trips when you add every day up. This plan would provide three hundred and seventy-nine trips to those stations across the corridor throughout the week. So just a different way to look at the level of investment. Again, I think this speaks to our ability to provide that service that we're really constrained to do in the North Star corridor in our current arrangement with BNSF. And they have a lot of traffic they have to manage on this Class One railroad as well. So there's a push and pull that they have to manage also. So we are in a better position to provide a lot more service for our customers. So this is the summary of what it all looks like coming together. By January next year, all of these routes would be in operation, including our new metro microzone anchored off the North Town Transit Center and the frequent service there. There will also be additional service that will be connecting to the Route eight fifty at the Foley Parking Ride, which provides direct service to downtown as well, and will likely be making adjustments throughout two thousand and twenty-six to see if there are other opportunities to really improve that service. So with that, I think that's my last slide, and I'll turn it back to Craig.
Thank you, Adam. I just have a couple more slides to cover. First, want to talk about when is the service going to transition? And so we announced today and then talked to our employees last week that we're planning to transition from commuter rail to bus service on January fifth. That's Monday in two thousand and twenty-six. And the last train would operate still TBD, but it would be the last train to take folks coming from the Packer Vikings game. That would be the last regular season NFL game that will either be on January third or on January fourth. And so the last day of weekday commuter rail service will be on January second. So besides planning for that transition, and there's still work to be done on that front, mostly led by Adam and his team, there are other activities going on as well that will be ongoing. We've been having conversations, and they will continue with our partner MINDOT, with the Federal Transit Administration. We may need to also involve the Federal Railroad Administration as well, as well as the state of Minnesota, BNSF. We've been having regular contact with now for a number of months, as well as other partners, particularly the corridor counties and cities. Some of the other activities that are underway are going through a process to determine disposition of the various infrastructure that is being requested to be utilized for other purposes by some of our corridor partners, completing design plans for station demolition and corridor restoration. The station platforms are within BNSF right away for purposes of providing commuter rail service. So that's something we need to work through with BNSF. Also, we need to assess the value of any undepreciated value associated with capital assets, and probably more importantly, real estate. Real estate always goes up typically, and we will have real estate that we'll need to dispose of. And then part of that disposing process is we have to clear it with the Federal Transit Administration and help pay for this project initially. So they have a very set process for these type of things, and we're in the process of developing disposition plans for the various different components in North Star, and then we'll eventually need to run those by the FTA and get their concurrence on how we are proposing to dispose of assets. The current action that we talk about here today is that we have an item coming before Transportation Committee on Monday, specifically asking for approval to suspend North Star commuter rail service on January fifth, two thousand and twenty-six, and to amend in to Network Now framework, the enhanced bus replacement service that Adam just spoke to. Assuming that's recommended by Transportation Committee, we go on to the full council on the twenty-seventh. We do anticipate there likely would be other actions needed from the council later in the winter timeframe.
Questions? Councilmember.
Thank you for the presentation. I attended one of the community engagement events up at, I think, Anoka Library. And one of the concerns was, and you mentioned it in the slides, is the extension up to St. Cloud. For scaling this for that impact, the slides is we have about four hundred and thirty average daily rides. How many of those are beyond our service area? How many of those riders get on at Big Lake as opposed to Ramsey or Anoka?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, council member, we're seeing about fifty boarding, or fifty total rides at the connection point at Big Lake. So it's a smaller portion of the overall, so it's probably twenty-five each direction.
Okay, so that's what I was, was thinking. Thank you for enumerating that. And then you talk a little bit in the presentation alluding to MINDOT has the right to control that corridor. Are there any ongoing discussions or any thoughts of MINDOT or another provider coming in to fill the gap of the rail service between Minneapolis and potentially St. Cloud?
Mr. Chair, council member, so MINDOT doesn't have rights within the corridor. They were the ones who developed North Star commuter rail. So that is their main piece of partnership in this. They actually have that direct connection with the federal government because they were the federal recipient for the original grant funds. They delivered it, and then they turned it over to us. So we're working with them. The rights that we have are very, very specific to commuter rail, not transferable to intercity passenger rail, for example, which MINDOT does have interest in. Our agreements with BNSF are specific to commuter rail as a mode and specific to the schedule of the trips that are called out, the seventy-two maximum trips that we can operate at those very specific points during the day.
And if I can just give a little context, that the, the, MINDOT has an Office of Transit for greater Minnesota, not our metro jurisdiction. So certainly, we're engaging with, with MINDOT, with their Office of Transit, and I think it's how they connect with Anoka, how do they provide service is something I know that they're, they're working through. So, so I think clearly there isn't as much frequency with the train. We're really developing much more of a bus plan, but it's closer to what we characterize as transit. MINDOT also has an Office of Passenger Rail, a very interested in intercity rail, which is what a Minneapolis to St. Cloud, St. Paul to St. Cloud, just as they have planned for Minneapolis to Duluth. That is not in our jurisdiction, it is intercity rail, and that is also a completely different kind of transportation service. So I think what is on the table for us is really about that transit commuter kind of travel ship.
Councilmember.
And thank you, Mr. Chair, for those comments, because I think it's helpful to understand relationally how, you know, those Sherburne County residents who are impacted by that service change, what avenues they might be able to pursue in terms of their own service needs. So I wanted to first, you know, start by saying thank you for starting out the conversation with data on cost and ridership, because I think as stewards of public dollars, we do have to think about what is the most effective use of those dollars? And when we have so many transit needs across the region, how we can really effectively and efficiently put those dollars to use? And so I appreciate contextualizing the conversation in that way and how we are thinking about continuing to serve our region in a way that reflects a more efficient use, but also really responsive to the demands of customers and their needs. And so I appreciate all the community engagement effort that went into it, particularly engaging with Anoka County and how those riders would like to see responsive service. I think, you know, for me, there would be kind of two questions, and that is really with the transition to the new routes, you know, what does that, it's not a one-to-one relationship, but the impact on cost and ridership rate, how we might see that in impacting those routes, the new routes? And so that would be one of these, just that same reflection. And then the second piece would be that, you know, I know that you mentioned that it wasn't an issue in the, it wasn't a huge proportion of ridership. But one of the things that we frequently hear in public comment and public engagement is around special events, ridership for North Star, that people like it to take to football games, to take to baseball games. You know, we are acknowledging that with our, you know, the last ride is, is during the Vikings regular season. And so we are switching to a more nimbo route. And so it seems like there's an opportunity to be even more responsive to customer and community requests around that. And so if you could speak to that, both what it looked like and also if we have an opportunity to be more responsive to those types of special events.
Mr. Chair, council member, we have a very good success story over the past few years since North Star began and serving the Twins games and had a really good relationship between both BNSF and the Twins, to be able to provide that service, and it's unique in our region. As we make this transition moving forward, over the past couple of years, we've not been able to meet each game time. There's special events for serving Twins games this season, and it's not the same market, and we don't have the same capacity in all areas to make that happen. So while North Star might be uniquely suited for serving Twins games, for example, or specific Viking games, we're not at the point right now where we can commit to saying we're going to serve all these events. We've actually tried serving special events from other corridors and haven't been met with super strong success. But it's something that we can continue to look at moving forward, but at this point, we're not committing to providing that same level of service for Twins games.
I might just interject that on any Vikings game, you'll see a parking lot full of charter buses from Sioux Falls or Iowa or Fargo or from Brainerd. But one of the biggest feeders has been the Blue Line and the Green Line. And transit will continue to serve Target Field and Target Center, but there's Allianz, there's Treasure Island Stadium, is that it? So, but the point is, I think our regular transit system is really supporting a lot of big population things, and I think will continue to, but maybe not quite as robustly as the North Star rail that is a customer.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, the question about the special events was one of the questions that I also had, so thanks for answering that. I was looking at the enhanced bus service proposed schedule, and I know that you mentioned that there is scheduling for after six PM, which could accommodate certain events during the weekday. That's kind of to be determined. When would we know when, and what are the, what is the criteria? What are you assessing to determine what those time slots would be during the weekday? I know it's, it's hard for the weekends.
Mr. Chair, council member, the weekday trips would really be anchored around the primary work start and end times in downtown Minneapolis during that rush hour period from just before six AM to eight-thirty or nine or so, and then the same in the afternoon, four PM to six, six-thirty, somewhere in there. So it'll be anchored around the work starts. We have a lot of good information about when those are. We've got good relationships with downtown employers to really bolster that, to make sure we're hitting the mark. The other piece of this is making sure that those trip times throughout the day are at a reasonable space-time as well. So at an hourly basis, we'll probably pick just after the hour in the afternoon and the morning to depart downtown. So we're thinking about what the needs are primarily around the commuter, but then, of course, there's other connections that can be made to other events or the airports or different destinations.
And I would assume, it's okay, that the service, once it is implemented, would be continued to be monitored and would be tweaked as needed, and there would be continued engagement at certain points with the affected riders.
Mr. Chair, council member, it's an excellent point, one that I neglected to mention, which is we are going to continue to monitor this moving forward to see how it performs, what's the on-time performance, what's the ridership, what do our customers think about those trip times, the scheduled times, are there things that we could do? We'll be looking at other connecting services in the Anoka, Coon Rapids, Plain Fridley area to see if there are other improvements that can be made over time and the advantages we have of flexibility to do that within our own operation. The eight twenty-seven and the eight eighty-eight will be operated by Metro Transit.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Captain Byberth and Chair?
Hi, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to make a few quick comments, I think more than anything, but appreciate all the work that you did in this. I know it's not easy undertaking. It's, as a transit system, we don't want to take away things, you know? But we took a good fresh look at ourselves through the Network Now process, where we were looking at what was successful, what was working, what wasn't working. We did very much the right thing, where we're taking the two hands of what we need to do, which is serve the public and provide public transit access, but also be just really responsible, and we did that. And this is one, really a, a next step to that, and I'm really glad this is getting rolled into the whole Network Now process because that is kind of that ongoing rolling look to see what's working, what isn't working, where should we expand? How are we building everything into the system as much as possible? Really glad that we'll be continuing to look as to how we expand Metro Micro and serve that connecting services because as we've seen in some of our other suburban areas, some of those connecting services, even the early work that we're seeing in with some of our suburban. connecting services, even the early work that we're seeing in, with some of our suburban plans are going very well. And so I'm really glad to see that. But thank you for doing this. I do think that we're not down the right path, but really appreciate the thoughtful nature that you brought to this.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson?
I can be brief, because I'm going to echo everything that Deb said. And I do really appreciate the hard work that our staff has been putting all of this together, because with Network Now, we had to take away routes and add routes. So this has been, again, a kind of an ongoing strategy coming out of COVID, but really trying to look into the future, and as our system is expanding. So I think that the fact that 25 years ago, you know, we might not have been able to provide bus service up here, hence, you know, commuter rail. But today, because our system is expanding, and we've got funding coming in, we can, we can do that, which is a good thing. And you mentioned early in the presentation that even in its peak years, it wasn't barely even meeting half of the original projections. So I found in 2004, one of the original studies that had this at the forecast year of 2025, ironically. And the average weekday trip was 5,500, work trips of that was 4,500, and then peak hour, you know, is at 9:10. But overall, it'd be over 1.6 million rides per year. So, you know, you, you predicate decisions back then, but 25 years ago, think about all the changes we've been through. So I know this is very tough, repeatable change isn't easy, but the subsidies and just the fact that we aren't, you know, meeting the ridership goals, it's just, it's a, it's a hard decision, but one we have to make. And last, I will just say, there is a lot of constituencies in this. So we know that our employees are going to have to shift and make changes, and we will make sure to be working with them along the way, too, because we've got other opportunities, Southwest coming online, and expanded BRT, and routes. So we'll take care of all of our constituencies in this, this whole process.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Johnson. I'll just echo one point, which I know, Adam, you've been so engaged with in Network Now. A number of bus suburban express routes have been eliminated and, or cut away back. And it is a fluid system, and we don't get as much attention on those, although they're important. But this makes it, because of the level of the investment, just that much challenge.
Any other questions, comments?
Well, thank you both very much. And for all of those that have been engaged in this process, we're going to continue the process. And I know that having a step-by-step thoughtful approach with full transparency and engagement is, is the way to go. So we'll look forward to the next series of meetings.
Thank you.
And with that, that was a very robust meeting. We have three minutes. I can't believe it, because I'm glad we were fairly close. But honestly, we have more important and heavy topics ahead. And thank you all for coming.